Counsel, what this this morning? I see everyone's logged in. First item, welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, March the 11th of the year 2021. First item on our agenda for this meeting is to review and discuss items on the agenda for the March 15th, 2021 Regular Council Meeting. Mr. Brady, I know we have some staff presentations on a few of the items on this agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor. Just to remind the council, we have two items that are already separately identified for the study session as presentations later, and that would be related to items 4J and item 6. But we also, in addition, so those are already separately agendized for after the review of this agenda, so we could give those presentations later. But also, we have two other presentations for this agenda. Items 5D, we thought we would like to present, give a briefing to the council on the Mesa Solar Projects. So it's item 5D. And we also have a presentation, because I know there were a lot of questions and comments from the public, on item 7A. So those are the ones we're prepared to brief the council on, and certainly we can answer any questions to any other items, too. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brady. So, counsel, the Legacy Sports Park and the cemetery expansion, which are both on our agenda for Monday, staff has, during our study session, we have planned presentations for those. And then, as Mr. Brady indicated, the solar panel expansion, and then also the zoning case that we'll be hearing on Monday. Staff is ready to present on those items as well. Other than those four items, counsel, do you have any questions regard, or need any information on anything else on Monday's agenda? Vice Mayor Duff.
Yes, um, thank you. I have some questions from constituents on Red Mountain's Multi-Generational Center and how the fees are changing on that structure. I noticed that they're moving from the 20 visits, and that's being discontinued, the 20 visit passes are discontinuing, and only to the monthly membership. And, but, anyway, everything is just crossed out and doesn't really show what the substitution is, other than the monthly membership. And, anyway, a clarification on that, just to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Duff, the fees and charges on Red Mountain Center, we're simplifying. And so what you see, excuse me, are the fees that are being eliminated, but we still have passes available, family passes, individual passes, based on memberships, that we've made easier to start up and then cancel, based on how comfortable people are feeling with coming into the Red Mountain Center. But that 20-pass visit rate is going away.
So all the other membership options, which I'm not quite sure where they are, I haven't been there, it's hard to say, but
Right, that's what I'm
Are still stable and changes in the fees?
Right. The, the monthly pass still exists, and so that's not changing. And that's based on, like I said, people being able to start it and stop it more easily. But that is why we're getting rid of the 20-pass visit, to make it just more streamlined, less complicated options to switch through.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Any other additional information regarding items that we don't know, we're already getting a presentation on? Okay. Well, then, maybe, Mr. Brady, should we just take them in order? Start with the item 4J, the cemetery expansion?
Yeah, okay. Yes, yes, Mayor.
We can do it in one, I'm sorry, whatever order your staff is ready to proceed with.
That's fine. That'll make it easier. Counsel, follow the agenda. So we'll, we're just gonna get Andrea back up here. So she's coming.
Okay. Good morning, counsel. We have just an overview of cemetery operations, excuse me, overall. So this is an overview, an aerial of the entire cemetery property, and we have the majority of it showing as sold out. So we have a few sections where we still have available areas for people to purchase, and those are in the north view section, up in the top, Memorial Acres, just east of the historic area, this is north of the cemetery office, the Heritage Garden area out by Country Club, columbariums that we recently expanded, and then we added the section outlined in the green dots in the Serenity section, that is getting ready to open up for sale here in the spring. And then, the ward recommendation for the construction project is in the remaining of the Serenity section, surrounding those dotted green lines. So as a typical year, we see that we are selling about 350 to 400 graves. And so with this addition through the expansion project, we're estimating that it will add about eight years of inventory to the cemetery. This is a overview of the section included in the construction project. So again, the, just for reference, the historic cemetery area that has the fence around it is down in the southeast corner of this expansion area. The grayed-out area in the middle is what we're getting ready to open this spring. And then the surrounding area is what would be included in this construction project. It includes grass areas for plots. And then the west end of it is in-ground urn vaults. We're currently out of inventory for that. A memorial plaque display space, and scatter gardens. Over, like I said, on the, on the west side of that, that's going toward Country Club and north of the gardens area. So for reference, we're talking in this general area up here. As we build that, as I said, there will be about eight years of inventory available again, and then the cemetery has one more section available for future expansion, down in the southwest corner, up against the canal, for a future expansion project. Other items that we've been working on over the past couple of years, when we had that great deal of tree loss during the monsoon season, we've been continuing to work on replanting trees, opening up areas to get the grass to grow in stronger by creating more space between the trees. So that's an ongoing effort that we're working through, again, this summer, as we get into the warmer temperatures and can grow more grass in that area. We've been working on digitizing our cemetery records. A lot of that has been on paper all this time, and so we're finally getting it to the point where it's digitized and searchable, make it easier to help us, help people find the records that they're looking for. The cemetery office itself received an update over the past year, just new paint, carpet furniture, freshening up the space to make it more comfortable for people coming in to visit with us. And then, I know there's been a few concerns about the wall on the north edge of the cemetery, and we're continuing to work through repair in that section. We had some degradation from water and irrigation hitting it, and so we're doing those repairs. Are there any questions?
Thank you, counsel. Questions, Vice Mayor Duff?
I just wanted to inquire a little bit on the financial side of how it's being funded. The gravesite sales, do they provide funding for the operations? I don't even know on the operations if it's totally self-sufficient, or it requires city funding, and then on the expansion, and how we're working that into our budget.
The sale of the gravesites throughout the cemetery do fund the operations completely. And what we're doing to fund the expansion is borrowing money from ourselves, essentially, for future sales. So it does completely cover the expense of what we're, of where we're expanding.
Great. I, I love the cemetery. I love walking through it. There's so much history and wisdom. It's something that we're very proud of, I think, in Mesa, of, and so thank you for all the work that you do there, and I'm glad to see this expansion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Andrea, there is a gap, I think, just west of Serenity Gardens, older parcel that's been there for decades, and between the apartments. Is there any movement perhaps to, I'll use the word, purchase that in the future? And then, also, I know that you're working with the BOR in straightening out the Utah ditch there, so that there could be more grave sites there on the expansions. So those two questions I have. Thanks.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the area west of where we're planning to put the in-ground urn vaults is not for sale currently, and so the intention is not to bring that into the cemetery. That parcel will stand alone. But that area up against it will receive a wall treatment, and then the hardscape improvements, and the, there's artificial turf and rose gardens and shade structures in that area to create a more peaceful environment around the, the in-ground vaults. As far as the Utah Canal and working with the BOR, we've been unable to get much progress on that, and so this expansion, for now, will stay out of that area, and is a possibility for future expansion as well, but not at this time.
So can I ask what the hiccup is with the BOR?
Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, we have been trying for a couple of years now to make progress on getting clearance to move the canal, and it's, it's the reason why we've done two other expansions, waiting for that to clear, and we aren't at the point still of seeing the end of that process. And so we're interested in trying to construct additional plots now, and hopefully in the future, BOR will have more clarity in their process on how to move the canal and what kinds of clearances are needed for that, and we can restart that conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Perhaps you and I could meet on that, see if I can provide any more traction with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Counsel, additional questions on this item? All right. Thank you very much. So this is, will be on our consent agenda for the, for Monday's meeting. Thank you for the presentation. What do you want to talk about next, Mr. Brady?
Let's move to item 5D, Mayor, and we'll have Frank McRae, I think he's got Sis Tony with him, to give us an update on the purchase power agreements for solar.
Morning, Mayor and Counsel. Frank McRae with the Energy Resources Department, and with me is Anthony Kudorin, our Energy Resources Program Manager, who heads up our energy, planning and procurement and acquisition processes. So I'm gonna turn it over to him. We're really excited about bringing some more solar into downtown Mesa, so have some good information to share with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Good morning. So Anthony Kudorin, Energy Resources Program Manager with the Energy Resources Department, and we're here with some solar projects. So just a quick refresher, the city of Mesa owns and operates its own electric and gas utilities. And to dispel a common misconception, no, we don't get our power from SRP. We purchase the majority of it on the wholesale energy market. But we also receive almost 20% of our energy from renewable hydropower projects along the Colorado River. And in addition to that, we also get about half a percent of our energy from our customers who have solar on their rooftops. So in fiscal year 1920, we received almost 20% of our supply of electric energy from renewable resources. Through our planning process, we're seeking to add three key resources. The first is a 15-megawatt utility-scale solar project with storage that's on the Gila River Indian Community. That project's already been through council and approved. We're just working on negotiations of that, and that would constitute about 10% of our electric supply annually. We're also looking to bring on a second utility-scale solar project, a little bit smaller, we're thinking 10 megawatts. That hasn't been through council. We're still in discussions there. And then the third resource that we're looking to bring on is what we're talking about today, which is this set of four solar projects here in downtown Mesa. So altogether, in a few years, we're envisioning nearly 37% of our energy coming from renewable resources, which is pretty remarkable in the area. So in June 2020, we issued a request for proposals, along with purchasing and engineering. This RFP hit the streets and was downloaded by 65, over 65, actually, entities, local and national solar providers, download the RFP. And it was four, four sites. The ASU building rooftop, a cover for the downtown Mesa Plaza ice rink building, so there'll be a small building near the ice rink, and we're envisioning the solar providing a cover for that building and extending past the extents of the building as well. And then two projects that are carport-style installations at 55 North Center Street, or the remaining parking lot after ASU is built, and the north parking lot that's just north of Mesa City Plaza as well, and those would be carport-style installations. Those two particular projects are still subject to city management approval and subject to budget approval, but we put them out through the RFP to, to have a vision of what we're gonna do there. In total, we're looking at just over 800 kilowatts of solar. And it's worth mentioning that all these projects are running concurrent with other projects. So Energy Resources is kind of piggybacking on these projects to add solar. Through the RFP process, we're looking to execute a power purchase agreement. This is a common contract structure between a utility and a solar provider, where the solar provider owns and operates the solar project, and that's because these private solar providers are able to capitalize on tax attributes that we, as a city, are not able to. So they're able to construct and operate these solar projects less expensive than the city would otherwise be able to. So they own and operate the solar. We purchase the energy and the environmental attributes from the, the projects. And what that means is that we're purchasing the energy and the right to say we're receiving renewable power. Some other major deal points, these will not be net metered, so they won't be reducing any building energy consumption. They're gonna be contributing directly to the grid, so they'll be going directly into our power portfolio. There'll be 25-year deals at a fixed price, which is the bid price that the vendor bid, plus any reasonable adjustments incurred during construction and design for changes outside the RFP scope, subject to approval by the city manager or designee. And then some other terms, the city will be able to purchase the system after year six and beyond. The reason for the year six and beyond provision is that during those first five years, the solar provider is subject to those, those tax provisions where they can't actually sell it before year six, otherwise they lose those, those tax benefits. The solar provider will be subject to damages for delays in construction. The solar provider is going to provide indemnification to the city against any intellectual property claims, and they'll be responsible for all maintenance. And during the process, usually we'll see a, one firm who will build the solar project. They'll then assign that to another firm who will operate the solar project and maintain it. So we want to be sensitive to that common industry practice where one firm builds it, one firm operates it. So as a result of the RFP, we had, I think, just over half a dozen providers show up at, at a walk-through, but we received three final bids to the RFP. They were all Arizona companies, and we evaluated those bids with a team from Engineering, Sustainability, and Energy Resources, based on price, their qualifications, and the thoroughness of their submittal. And so what we're seeking is city council to authorize the city manager or designee to negotiate and enter, enter into those power purchase agreements with Solon Corporation, who was the winning bidder for those four solar projects, subject to the terms that I just went over. That's it.
With that, I think we're ready to
Thank you very much. Exciting presentation. I know we, we have several questions. Let's start with Mr. Luna, and then Mr. Thompson.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I think, I don't know, maybe two, three years ago, we had a similar project with the Mesa Art Center. What happened with that deal? Did that, how did that pan out? Maybe, and is it the same company doing the same project?
So that was with the company Amoresco. That was a project that we worked on very diligently with legal to get the project to the finish line, and we met Amoresco's deadline of getting them a power purchase agreement just before the new year. So we, we thought we were there. But at the end of negotiations, we received back a document that had changes that weren't discussed between the parties and we weren't comfortable with, and we took that as kind of a sign of bad faith in the process, and maybe a sign of things to come. So we got really close with that deal, and, and we were really excited about it, but there was just some things at the end that really worried us that we didn't feel comfortable moving forward with.
So Anthony, what are you going to do to ensure that we don't get into another situation like that? And I guess really it's the company's responsibility. I, I appreciate the, these private-public partnerships. I think they're good for the city of Mesa, but how can we make sure that we don't get into another situation like that?
Sure. That's a, that's a great question. Working with Solon so far, they've been very forthright with us. So far, we feel very comfortable with them. They're actually on the line right now, and they're online, so if, if they want to comment as well, they're welcome to, but I, I think with this process, we were able to put forth a more comprehensive document earlier in the process, and I think we better understand what we're looking for this time. You know, that was our first large power purchase agreement to purchase solar that we'd done as a team in Energy Resources. These are 100-page documents. They're very extensive. So we have some experience now. We were able to lay things out a little more transparently at the beginning of the process. So I think we're doing what we can to avoid that, and we've made Solon aware of our concerns and, and what happened last time.
So do they feel that they can go ahead and, and make this happen? I mean, given, you know, given our history, I mean, not, not the city of Mesa's history, but working with these solar companies. That would be my only concern. We want to make sure if we get entrant into this kind of situation, this kind of deal, that they can fulfill the, their contractual, you know, requirements.
Mayor and Councilmember Luna, all I can share with you is we just have a much different feel of how things are progressing with Solon. The, the issues that became obstacles to furthering negotiations and completing the execution of the contract with Amoresco aren't seeming to come up as the barriers that they were in that instance. They're, they've been working very closely with us, very collaboratively with us when the issues come up. They've invested a lot of money upfront in terms of engineering and doing some, some steelwork for the ASU building, as an example. So the, just the relationship that we have with Solon is dramatically different than the relationship we had with Amoresco, with where we're at in negotiations at this stage.
All right. Thank you, Frank, and thank you, Anthony. Appreciate you taking the lead on this. Again, I, I do appreciate private-public partnerships. I think those are good deals when we work with a good company, and so I'm gonna be supportive of this. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Luna. I think P3s are, are way to go for our community. I have a couple of questions, maybe Anthony or Frank, you guys can answer them. One is on the power purchase agreement. What are we looking for per kilowatt or megawatt as compared to what we would buy off the grid? And then the other is solar degradation. As the, as the panels degrade over time and we start losing some of our collectible, I guess, kilowatt hours, how do, the, the contractor will have to replace those panels. And then at that six-year point, are we going, if we decide to buy, do we look at the degradation of the system and then require upgrades prior to purchase, or how does that, how does that work out?
Sure. Councilmember Thompson, Mayor. So with the, the purchase price, I guess to give some perspective, our, our average portfolio cost is right around 3.5 to 4 cents per kilowatt hour. That's all the energy we buy historically. That was last year. However, with the Texas crisis and California energy instability, we're pretty confident we're gonna see that number go up, unfortunately. So there's just a lot of instability in the market, a lot of tightening of capacity. So when we look at these solar projects, we look at the present value of it over the life of the asset, and so we envision our power price going up, of the market power we would otherwise purchase. Because these are complex solar projects that require a lot of steel to get them off the ground, et cetera, they are more expensive than that, that 4 cents, let's say, and they range anywhere from just over 9 cents to right around, I think, 13 or 14 cents. However, you know, we should mention this is not a large portion of our portfolio, so the impact to our customers will be very minimal. And we view the, the other benefits, I mean, these projects are providing shade, there's a value to the shade. These projects are providing renewable attributes, there is a value to that on the market as well. So altogether, we vision those other, other benefits as bringing value to the table to make up for that gap in, in the pricing. And then your second question regarding degradation, so
Hold on, before we go too far. I mean, there's a significant difference between 3, 3 cents per kilowatt hour and 13 cents per kilowatt hour, and we have such a small electric grid in our downtown. I don't see how it wouldn't impact our, our consumers, our residents. How is that cost gonna be spread across? Because I know that we have in place, we do have the, the program where those that are struggling with their, with their electric bills, we can, we have the, the option, or they have the option to, to log in and, and negotiate or what have you, or we subsidize and help out on their utility bills. And so for those that aren't part of that program, it seems like they're gonna be bearing the brunt of, of this increase. And again, there's, there's quite a difference between 3 cents per kilowatt hour and 13 cents per kilowatt hour.
I'm sorry. No. So, Mayor, Councilman Thompson, that's why you see the projects that we're proposing are projects that we get dual-purpose benefit from. We're not out just building solar panels in the middle of a field. We've tried to be very strategic, and that's why you hear, one, the ASU building is a requirement of ASU, and so that's just built in, you know, a lot of that's built into the cost of the building, and it's something that they've requested, and we've felt that that was an important statement for downtown. The, the solar panels on top of the building that will support the Plaza Park, again, the building's gonna be built, there is obviously some more, a little more structural addition to this, but it's, it's a project that in itself provides a benefit of shade to the area. And then specifically, if we get, if we come back to council with a proposal to do the parking lots in front of, between Missile Plaza and 55 North Center, then, again, it's intended to have a dual purpose, to provide shade for parking as well as for the cost. And, and as we've taken it in the past, the council has asked us, challenged us, to look at opportunities to bring solar into the portfolio, recognizing it is, at this time, maybe more expensive, but it's also more expensive on other sources that are, might be not considered as renewable as solar. So we, we're trying to balance in our portfolio the renewables, along with those that are not considered narrowly as environmentally friendly. So we're, we're trying to move in a, in a pace that combines all of them, but certainly if the council provides direction that we shouldn't be providing solar because of its extreme cost, I mean, that's, that's something we didn't know, because we kind of felt like the consideration we were getting from council was to look at providing these more environmentally friendly sources into the portfolio, but we can, we can certainly switch.
Mayor and Counsel
Well, I like the idea of using solar. I'm not opposed to solar. It was just, you know, to, to make a statement that it's not gonna impact, not gonna have a large impact on our, on the users. I think it will. I mean, again, there's a significant difference between 3 cents and 13 cents, and, and it's not spread over a large area of 520,000 people. It's spread over a very small area of our downtown. So, there has to be some type of, of hit to the consumer at the end of the day.
Mayor and Council, if I could jump in here. So, one thing to keep in mind is that 13-cent power versus the average of 3 and 1/2 cents power, that's 3 and 1/2 cents power over the course of the year. During the summertime, we pay much higher than 3 and 1/2 cents a kilowatt hour. We'll pay up to 10 cents a kilowatt hour, and during the summer crisis of, of 2020, when California's energy market did what it did, we were paying upwards of 100, 100 cents per kilowatt hour. So, there's times where these will be our, one of our lowest or below the market price of power that we would otherwise buy. The other thing to keep in mind is this is a fixed price for the 25-year term of the agreement. 25 years from now, we're still going to be paying 13 cents a kilowatt hour for that power. The other thing, when, when we talk about the, the magnitude of the impact, in the entire scheme of things, the cost that we expect to incur as a result of this is going to cause a minimal impact on our bill. It won't be zero, but the relative impact versus all the other costs that we have to manage, this is a relatively small cost because of the small number of kilowatt hours that it's producing. It's not going to be our major source of supply. Now, when we get to that 10-megawatt source of supply, that's going to produce, provide, you know, double-digit percents of our portfolio, that's where the price will become very important, and that's where we're very focused on getting that utility-scale project with a price down in the 2 to 4 cents per kilowatt hour range.
Okay. Much better. Thank you Frank. And on the degradation piece.
Regarding the degradation, so the industry standard right now, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, is a degradation of half a percent per year. That's just the, the solar panels degrading a little bit. If we were to purchase it after year six, really what we're seeing in the industry is not so much that the, the modules, the actual solar panels themselves are degrading much. It's more the inverters have a shelf life of about 6 to 10 years, so that, that's the other major piece of equipment in a solar installation that converts the DC electricity coming out of the panels to AC grid electricity. So, so that, that would be the biggest risk to us if we did purchase it, would be having to replace those, those inverters.
In, in terms of whether there's an incentive for the, the owner of the panels to replace the panels, it's going to be an economic decision on their part. The price is high enough that it incents them to replace those panels when they start, when their production starts deteriorating to the point where it makes financial sense for them. But if we were to, to purchase the panels at the end of that six-year term or beyond, we would do a very thorough analysis to say, what, what is the value of these panels based upon the degradation and make sure that it's, it's not something that we're making a bad financial decision because of that deterioration. There would be a consideration and valuation of that.
Okay. Thank you Frank. Appreciate it. Thanks Anthony.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'm highly in support of this. It helps us reach our long-term goals even as a state, because our Arizona Corporation Commission has adopted a goal of 100% carbon-free energy by 2050. Of course, looking at what we have at 36-some percent, that I think that we can achieve something maybe by 2030, 2035. Of course, we'll have those discussions on what our city goals are at another time, but it also adds to our resiliency. As we saw in Texas, I think having some of our own energy supply locally and growing upon that, I hope to see this program expanded over time, will help us also on resiliency. So, on this immediate project of these four locations, what percent will this add to our clean energy, our renewable energy portfolio, or is it too small to measure?
Vice Mayor Duff, Mayor. So, per this slide, you can see the, the downtown Mesa solar line. That's, it's going to be about half a percent of our utility supply portfolio every year in terms of energy. So, you know, our, in terms of the budget, our, our budget ranges anywhere from $11 million to $16 million, and, and like we mentioned, that there's upward pressure on that from the, the Texas market instability, and so this would be down in the $150,000 range. So, to Councilmember Thompson's point, while we do expect a, a cost increase, it's a small portion of that portfolio, but energy-wise, about 0.4%.
Great. And, of course, we'll see more demand on our electricity in downtown as the developments are operational, all our multifamily ASU and many other buildings. Also, Frank, I asked you the other day about a, a clean energy rider that residents could sign up for to pay just a little bit more on their electricity in order to provide funding for the goal of using clean energy and the renewable energy service rider, RESR. Thank you for the information, but I have to apologize. I haven't looked into it. And so, could you explain a little bit more of that?
Sure, and Tony will jump in and help me where I maybe missed something that's important, but it was adopted by the council last March, I believe, and it allows us for not just residential, but also any of our commercial customers to agree to pay 1 cent per kilowatt hour more on their bill based upon their consumption in kilowatt hours for us to meet varying percents of their energy supply with renewable energy. And so, I think we have a option of 25, 50, 75, or 100%. So, based upon how much kilowatt hours each month a customer might consume, times whatever percentage that they want to meet with that renewable energy supply, times that 1 cent per kilowatt hour, we'll go out and buy what's called renewable energy credits out on the market where we can verify that there's a serial number for a, a production of kilowatt hour somewhere on the grid, and we can say that that's what supplied your energy. That serial number can't be used anywhere else on the grid to say that it supplied somebody else's energy. So, that would be the, the program that we're getting ready to start doing some promotion on it. We wanted to take it very slowly last year, given it's a new program and we didn't have a whole lot of systems and processes set up to accept applications for that and start processing that. But I think we're ready to go this year, so the applications start April 1st, that process, so we'll start doing some promotion of that through social media. And of course, if you have any organizations that you'd like for us to sit and visit with, we'll be more than happy to come and promote that program and start getting people signed up. The service would start June 1st?
July 1st.
July 1st. So, that's that program. Anything else to add, Tony?
Nope. That's, that's comprehensive.
Great. I, I'd love to promote that. I had one other question. I don't, I don't know. My brain's not working this morning, so I'll let it go for right now. Thank you. Oh, can I interrupt real quick?
Of course.
I know it's speculative, but do you think we have the opportunity in our electric grid in down, in the downtown, the central Mesa area to be on 100% clean energy in, let's say, 10 years, or is that a loaded question that I shouldn't be asking right now?
I think there's some, going to be some unintended consequences, just like what California faced with the, the level of renewables. When you have a intermittent fuel source-type energy generation, whether it's the, the gas in Texas or the solar and wind and even geothermal in California, you have to build in a, a level of resiliency. So, it's going to be, how much does the city want to invest in the resiliency, the resources that are required to bring that resiliency to, to back up or firm up, if you will, those renewable resources? There's things like batteries that certainly help, but now you've added to the cost of your, your renewable energy portfolio. There's different types of energy storage technology that, you know, Mesa's uniquely situated to be able to take advantage of. But I, there, there's all kinds of models that have been produced, and, and we're looking at using some of those models to create scenarios that says if you want to go to 50% by this date, here's what the implications are. Here's what the type of resources you are that can use that. You know, we, we've learned a lot from what happened in California last year and Texas this year about getting energy generation sources as close as possible to the load. And so, you know, we, we want more solar into the system, but it's energy-limited, it's intermittent, so we have to account for that in our planning and analysis and economic analysis. How do we firm up that energy? And so, is there a way of taking renewable gas, which we would consider, and hopefully the council would consider, green energy, a green energy source, and maybe use that to fuel generation in internal combustion engines that would normally be fueled and have very low emissions with natural gas? But if the source of energy is renewable natural gas, then we would hope that that would allow us to meet that, that green energy designation. And if so, I think we can really make it a very reliable system because we can locate those relatively close to our load centers, and we can make it green, which is a very unique set of circumstances to accomplish.
Right. Yeah, I understand the volatility of renewables and hoping there's more options on, on clean energies out there that'll help supplement the volatility of renewables. So, thank you.
Thank you, council. Additional questions on this topic? Mr. Freeman.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I want to address battery storage. Can you tell me, Anthony or Frank, what the storage capacity, maybe I missed it in your presentation, and where's that storage going to take place?
There, there's one project that has the storage with it, and I'll let Tony address that. He's the one that has the details on that.
Sure. Mayor, council, Councilmember Freeman. So, there's no onsite storage with any of these projects. We didn't envision it being necessary because it's a relatively small set of installations relative to our total supply portfolio. So, we're able to accommodate the swings in generation pretty easily just with purchasing power if this, if a cloud comes over and purchasing less if the sun comes back. The larger projects at the bottom of this table, the Clonera project and the, the one that's pending, the Clonera does have a battery storage on it, or is at least envisioned to do that. That's, that's what we went out for with RFP and, and were approved for through council. So, that's on the Gila River Indian Community. It's a 15-megawatt project, and I believe the storage is 4 and 1/2 megawatts. So, it won't be able to store the complete equivalent of the solar panels, but as those solar panels fall off in production, when the sun goes down, the battery will, will kick in and provide energy during peak time. So, we see it as a big benefit because getting energy, you know, between that 4 o'clock and 6 o'clock timeframe when their conditioners are kicking on is very valuable to us.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, if, for permission, the solar company that we're entertaining is on the line. It was mentioned. Could we hear from them? Perhaps they might want to say a little bit about themselves and what they're going to provide. Would that be okay?
Of course, Mr. Freeman. We invite the, the contractor to maybe introduce yourselves to us. We're looking forward to working with you, it sounds like.
Yes, good morning. This is Luke Alm from Solon Corporation. We're, we're very excited about this project and have really enjoyed working with the city so far. Well organized, and your project's going to be beautiful. Solon Corporation, we're headquartered right here in Arizona and construct these projects in-house using all Arizona labor. So, that's something that we believe is important, and especially in the, our public and private municipal deals. We have a, quite a bit of experience with municipalities and school districts and, and other commercial clients, and this project is going to be a success. And, you know, there were some other questions regarding, you know, past projects, and I just want to assure the council and, and the city that we're doing everything possible to make sure that your project is a success, and, and would note the importance of, you know, the timelines, the construction timelines and, and the project viability and everything else that's, that's going on surrounding this project. We're looking forward to working with the city, the mayor and the council, and please feel free to reach out at any other time with any other questions.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, that's all the questions I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Council, additional questions? I, I think a lot of the questions I have have been covered earlier, but I just want to, to note that I, I know, we had a similar discussion maybe a year or two ago, and then where we were kind of comparing the, the rates for this type of a smaller shade structure mounted solar panels, and, and I, the conclusion I, I came to the last time we talked about this is you really can't compare the, the price per kilowatt with these types of projects with the, the large industrial panel, you know, the projects like the, the Gila River project that we're partnering on, where you have literally hundreds of acres and, and it's just a very, you know, a low overhead, low cost of production. These types of projects are, are important, but again, they're just not going to be as competitive, and, and that's okay, because as we indicated, this is, you know, less than 1% of, of our, of our production. So, I think, but it sends a wonderful message. You know, when people arrive at the city of Mesa office building, they, they park under a, a shade structure that, it's also a, a solar panel. I think that it's productive. It's not just for show, but it, it also does accomplish the miss, the, the mission of sending the message that this is a priority in our community. So, so I'm, I'm good with that. And it sounds like we're, we're, we're making great progress towards using sustainable energy. 20% hydroelectric off the Colorado River, 10% is going to come from that big Gila River solar project that we've been talking about, and then it sounds like a, a combination of other assets will get us about another 7, 8% of, of solar. Roughly, are my, are my numbers correct, gentlemen, or did I misunderstand something?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's, that's accurate.
Okay. So, I guess that, as Vice Mayor Duff noted earlier, we are in the process of, staff is helping us adopt a, a climate action plan, and, and we'll see how that 38%, you know, fits into our, our long-term plan. Maybe we need to aspire to, to, to increase that over time to get to, to where we want it to be, but it's good to know where we are right now. And that'll be, I'm looking forward to, to the discussion going forward on our climate action plan. But, Mr. Brady, I, I for one, am, am looking forward, I look forward to staff coming forward with the additional projects that, that have been implied here, where the shade structures over the, the parking garage or the, the parking areas that are adjacent to the, to the city plaza building, and, and would like to know more about, but that, but anticipate being supportive of, of additional projects like this going forward.
Thank you, Mayor. And we just remind the council too, and we're, while the city of Mesa electric is a very important part of our portfolio, we also have entered into significant solar programs with SRP for city facilities that are outside of the city's electric. So, while you see this 36 and 1/2%, that's specifically related to our city-owned electric, but as far as a consumer of power, I would just remind the council, if recall, we participated in a significant solar project with SRP for other, many of our other facilities that we have outside of our own electric area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brady, should we go to Agenda Item 6 now?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you very much. We'll invite Veronica to come forward with the presentation on what we refer to as the Legacy Project.
Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Veronica Gonzalez, Development Services Project Manager, and I'm here to discuss with you the Legacy Sports Project. The Legacy Sports Site is located on the east side of Ellsworth Road and the south side of Williamsfield Road in southeast Mesa. The property is currently in the process of being annexed into the city limits. Once it is annexed, the property will be zoned light industrial for approximately 295 acres and leisure and recreation for approximately 41 acres. This will be to accommodate a multi-use sports and recreation facility. To offer you some site context, what we are looking at here is a rendering of the site. So, we are... So, we are looking southwest into the property. What you see here are the three main buildings, which will total approximately 477,000 square feet. These buildings will house indoor store, excuse me, indoor sports. And then distributed throughout the site, you'll see that there are the various outdoor sports fields and courts. The specific activities proposed by Legacy Sports USA include indoor sports such as basketball, gymnastics, cheer, dance. They will also have 41 pickleball courts, 24 soccer fields, 12 outdoor sand volleyball courts, eight baseball fields, and an, and an outdoor events lawn. To facilitate the proposed development, city staff has been working with the applicant on a pre-annexation development agreement. The development agreement covers public street improvements for the three arterial streets adjacent to the property. Specifically, the developer is responsible for constructing street improvements for the south side of Williamsfield Road, which will include the extension of a 20, 20-inch water line, as well as improvements for the east side of Ellsworth Road, which will have, which they will install a traffic signal that will be located at the intersection of Ellsworth Road and Legacy Avenue. Legacy Avenue is actually a, an onsite private street is, and is a point of access to the, to the development from Ellsworth Road. Crisman Road in this location does not currently connect to any existing improvements either north or south of this location. So, the development agreement includes deferral for improvements to Crisman Road that if any one of the following items, upon the occurrence of any one of the four following items happens, the first being rezoning of the LR property in the southeast portion of the property. If any development were to occur along the east side of the property adjacent to Crisman Road, where you'll see in the site plan area or, you'll see on the site plan here is designated future site plan area. If there is any development that occurs on the east side of Crisman Road, and finally, should they, if they receive any written notice from the city. At the end of the deferral period, the city does have the option to collect a payment in lieu of construction from the developer instead of having them construct the improvements for Crisman Road. In the development agreement, we do include a provision that allows us to reimburse the developer for the improvements that they will be installing in Williamsfield Road for an amount up to $1.5 million. The Williamsfield Road improvements will provide a public benefit to the city in that they expand Mesa's street network system as well as connect the gateway, the Gateway East development plan for Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport to the future SR24 freeway. The Williamsfield Road improvements were, are, were actually a part of the 2020 Mesa Moves Bond election that we had this past November. And so, the reimbursement, the funds for the reimbursement to the developer will come from that bond program. However, the reimbursement will not be payable to the developer until the improvements for both Ellsworth and Williamsfield Road have been completed and accepted. We've also included in the development agreement certain prohibited uses. The light industrial zoning designation that will be on the large majority of the property includes some land uses by right that are incompatible with the general plan character designation of the area. Some of these uses include towing and impound yards, outdoor storage, and overnight RV parking. However, with the overnight RV parking, we, we will allow participants, people participating in scheduled events on the site to park their RVs onsite for no more than three days within any seven-day period. What you're looking at here is not an exhaustive list of prohibited uses, but simply an example of the types of incompatible uses. As I stated earlier, the property is still within the Maricopa County limits and is pending annexation. The developer is on a pretty aggressive construction schedule and therefore has already obtained some building permits from Maricopa County and has already started construction. Permits that they have obtained so far include grading and demolition, some building foundations, and the developer is actually currently working with the county to obtain at-risk permits for masonry and electrical conduit. Our next steps with this project is that the annexation and rezoning will, will be introduced on Monday. Following that, the final action for the annexation, rezoning, and the pre-annexation development agreement are scheduled for April 5th. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Veronica. Council, this is an exciting project, going to be, have a, a real impact. I mean, we, we talked about the, the economic impact of sports tourism in our community quite a bit with spring training and the past Mesa Plays projects during that campaign. So, it's exciting to see the, the private economy step up and provide some of these resources that are going to invite tourism to our community. So, this is an exciting project. Any questions for Veronica on her presentation? All right, well, again, this is on our agenda. We'll leave it on the consent agenda item number six for Monday night. Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Mr. Brady, are we up to the zoning case?
We are, and I think Nana will get in place for that presentation, Mayor.
Good morning, Mayor, council. The case before you is a rezoning case and a plan area development amendment. You're looking at a site which is located west of Alma School Road on the south side of Bass Pro Drive. The specific request is to modify a plan area development that was approved in 2007 to allow additional office building on the property and also a parking garage on the property as well. Just to go through the history of approvals, because there's been a couple of approvals and development processes that has happened on the site. The actual development started on the property back in 2004, where the property was rezoned from, to Plan Employment Park as part of the Mesa Riverview development. And just to take you back to the general plan, character designation and the zoning, the purpose or the goals of the Plan Employment Park is to create regional, large, commercial office retail development that attract people from the immediate community as well as the regional area as well. And the general point character designation is also mixed-use activity, which is purpose or intended for such large commercial retail and office development. So, back in 2007, after the city council had approved the rezoning of the property, the planning and zoning board did approve a site plan on the property to allow six office buildings, and I have those site plans as I go through my presentation that I will show you. And also, the office buildings were two-story high, which could go up to 40 feet high. And there was no condition of approval. I think this is one of the discussions that has been going on with the community as well, where we, I reviewed all the documents and the history of the project. There was no condition that prohibited future changes to the site plan, and that's also why you are reviewing the project today. Typically, when those prohibitions happen, it's through a development agreement, and there was no development agreement on the property or is there any condition that basically prohibit the applicant or the property owner from coming to make modifications to the site? And then, in 2008, the city council approved another site plan. Basically, this approval was just to allow private streets in the development. In the City of Mesa, whenever you have a development that you want to utilize private street, you are required to do a plan area development to allow those private streets. So, that was mainly the main purpose for this city council approval back in 2008. And then in 2014, there was an administrative modification to the site plan. It's very important to know that that was a code requirement that allowed the planning divisions to make minor modifications or modifications to an approved plan based on a criteria that was in the zoning ordinance. And so, that criteria was met, and there was an approval for this site plan, and again, I'll show that as I go through my presentation. So, this is the history of the site plans as you see on your screen. Back in 2008, there were six buildings approved on the site, and pay attention to D and C. So, these six buildings were two-story high, that could go up to 40 feet high, and occupied entirely the whole site. There was no parking structure as part of this approval. And then, in 2014, through the administrative site plan approval, there were two site plans that were approved as alternative that each one could be developed. One showed where you have building D and E basically being combined, and then you have building C and F also being combined. And building A, B, C, and F, those were two-story that could be developed up to 40 feet. Building E and D was approved to go up to 55 feet high. And it's also important to know that with this combination, the total square footage of the whole site for the 2014 approval was reduced. It was reduced, I think, a little bit over 10,000 square feet compared to the 2008 approval. And then as part of the 2014 approval, there was a second option, which did approve a parking structure that was two-story, and it could go up to, I think, 38 feet. So, those were the approval that has happened before the new application that is being proposed. And this is the new application that is actually before you for consideration. Know that the request before you is specific to the new building, as you see here, and then the parking garage. And basically, what you're looking at, the parking garage being proposed is 55 feet, is three stories, four levels. It's actually three stories but four levels because of the top structure. And then the new office building, which is 55 feet, which will be of the same height as building E and D. So, you're looking at the site. This is actually a picture showing entrance to the site. This is where the new office building and the parking structure is going to be. You're also looking at basically from the west to the east of the site, showing this, we were trying to show the distance between the existing homes and the actual site. There is approximately about 150, 120 feet distance between the existing homes and the site, and it's also separated by the canal as you see. This is looking from the east to the west, again, showing the distance between the existing homes and the location of the proposed parking structure and office building. So, there's been several conversations and review of the parking structure. This started last year, and both planning staff and other, you know, economic development and city staff that are involved with this review, we recommended the applicant to extensively work with the community because we did receive feedback from the community, and I'll go through this. So, based on our feedback through the review process, the applicant did make changes to the parking structure. One was to increase the landscaping buffer to really mitigate the aesthetics of the parking structure. And then there was also a solar panel that was part of the initial proposal that was eliminated through the neighborhood meetings and various discussion. And I'll get to the design review board also, how they review this project and their recommendation as well. So, this is a second revisions to the initial parking structure revisions that you were looking. It's very important to pay attention to the increase in the landscape buffer. If you look here, there is extensive addition of tree planting to the landscape buffer to really screen the parking garage. Also, as part of the review, the initial parking structure did not have screening material, basically screening the vehicles. You could see, or you may be able to see a little bit through the parking structure. However, as part of the various review processes, the applicant was asked to add screening to basically block the potential vehicular lights from screening adjacent to 120 feet away. So, they added screening materials and also added the landscape tree plantings. Again, you're looking at the parking structure. Also, as you see here, there, this is the existing office building, which is higher than the parking structure. The proposed office building is 55 feet, the parking structure is 44 feet. And I'll show you the parking structure. Also, there is a reduction to the south of the parking structure, and this is the existing building, which is 55 feet. So, the design review board reviewed this project in October, and they did make recommendation for changes. As you know, typically, the design review board review and make recommendation to me for final approval, but throughout the neighborhood meeting and the extensive discussion, the design review board recommended to me to bring back the project for them for a second review. So, this went back to the design review board in February for another review and to make sure that some of the changes that they had recommended to the developer were addressed. However, they did not have major concern with the office building. Their main concern was the parking structure. So, through that recommendation, the applicant reduced the southern part of the parking structure to 26 feet. So, that is stepped down to two stories instead of three, and also added the screening materials and increased the landscaping along the canal. They were also asked to include some level of building articulations to improve the facade of the parking structure. And as part of their February review, they added, they wanted also the applicant to improve the quality of the screening materials because they were not absolutely satisfied with the quality of the screening materials. And so, the applicant is so making, or is about to submit those quality screening materials for final approval by the planning staff. The applicant also added this to, the application is line of sight where, what you're looking at, these are specific addresses across the development or across the canal, where you see basically if you're standing at a balcony or the backyard, you see the parking is almost at level with the second story, and you're able to see basically a little bit over the second story, and then you can see the third story and all the others. So, again, there's been decent amount of citizen participation where the developer held two virtual meetings, one in October, one in November. My understanding from the developer is also they've talked to people who have reached out to them as well. So, based on the changes that were recommended by the design review board, the goals of the Plan Employment Park and the mixed-use activity and the criteria as outlined in the city's zoning ordinance, staff recommended approval to the planning and zoning board, and the planning and zoning board also is recommending approval to the city council. And that concludes my presentation. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Nana. Council, any questions on this presentation? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, since this is in my district, we've been, and I, I want to thank staff that have been very diligent about getting the right information so that as a council, we can make an informed decision. And as I look at the timelines, you know, Nana, is there any more documents that might come forward to show otherwise? I mean, this is city documents, and we don't have any third-party documents so far showing up, correct?
Mayor, council, member- Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I'm not aware of any other additional documents beside all the documents that we have on file.
Yeah, so we have a pretty good history of what has been, let's say, approved for the waypoint area. And, and just so those who are listening know that I'm anxious to listen to Monday's discussion on this and we've given a timeline to the neighborhood to produce any documents they might have. But hopefully, you know, through discussion on Monday, we can make a decision either to approve this project and/or a continuance. So with that, thank you, and all, if any of my colleagues would like to comment, they're welcome to.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Heredia.
Quick question, Nana. As far as the step on the parking garage, could you go back to that slide and just explain again the, the, yeah, the, the, the reasoning for that step? Or it seems like you're still able, you're still seeing the garage there on the other side. But i- is there, could you explain again the step reasoning? And second question on just a number of parking spaces, they just need that amount of spaces to fulfill what, what the new development will, will, will need for, for spaces?
Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, the reason for the reduction in the, on the southern section of the parking garage, throughout the discussion with the community, my understanding from some of the comments and some of the things that I heard was actually there is a mountain view that some of them are able to see and they believe that if it starts with a three-story, they may not be able to see the mountain view. And it's also, so the applicant in a way to accommodate them was to step it down a little bit to twenty-six feet and then go to forty-four feet, so you may be able to see some of the mountain view. And it's important to also pay attention that as much as as part of our review process, we do consider aesthetics and all the other things that make a healthy city. When it comes to basically looking at a mountain view as a criteria for our review, we do not absolutely look at that as an isolated case. We look at what is zoning district is, what is the allow height? That becomes a primary way of us reviewing the projects. And then in terms of parking, so the parking structure, our code does allow for additional parking to be contained in a building. That is why they are able to do the parking structure. The parking structure and the additional parking being proposed is always accommodated in the zoning ordinance. So that's why basically they are required to build a parking structure for those additional spaces.
Are, are they building more or, or, or to the amount that is needed for the office, the new office building?
My understanding is they, well, there are two things. There is a zoning ordinance requirement for specific parking spaces and there's also the industrial need for the parking spaces. They, based on the zoning ordinance, they are building additional, but that additional is always allowed or is accommodated if you build, build a parking structure. And then in terms of their industrial need, from my conversation with economic development and their conversation with the applicant as well, that is the amount of parking spaces they need to make this development viable. So they are trying as much as possible to accommodate potential clients and to make the site also viable.
And, and they're, they're building on top of the current parking structure, parking available in that area, in that, that center, right?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Heredia. So this is the approved two thousand and eight plans. As you see, C and D actually had buildings on it. And then in two thousand and eight, this is a modific, uh, in two thousand and fourteen, this is a modification. What they are proposing is they are still keeping the building, the parking structure, which is here, on top of what could have been just sea of parking spaces and the new building here. So overall, they are utilizing and maximizing the highest and best use of the site and minimizing the sea of parking that could also just be on the site as well.
All right. Thank you, Council. Additional questions on this item? Well, let's go with Vice Mayor Duff and then I know Mr. Freeman has another comment. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Um, Nana, you mentioned something about, did you mention solar panels on the parking structure? If so, are they on the roof of the parking structure? Because on the presentation it shows cars or maybe I'm confused and understood incorrectly.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff and Christine actually reminded me that you asked me this question, so. Yes, they had proposed solar panels on top of the parking garage, but the neighborhood were very much concerned that there could be, that, that, it could be, you know, glare. Glare from the solar, solar panels maybe, you know, may provide some hazard to their community. So the applicant removed it. However, the planning and zoning board actually added a condition that, you know, in the future, there could be solar panels or they may be able to have solar panels that doesn't have much glare. And the applicant should not be prohibited absolutely from doing that. But if they're going to do that, then they will have to come through the public hearing process to be able to add those solar panels to the buildings, to the building. So there is a condition that those modifications will have to come through planning, zoning, and then to city council. But that did not, or that does not absolutely prohibit them from being able to add solar panels in the future.
Okay, so they removed the solar panels on the roof of the parking structure and now they're using that area as parking spaces. Is that correct?
You know, Mayor, Vice Mayor Duff, it was on top of the new building, my understanding.
Like, I, I'm assuming that, but like a lot of other solar panels, they would just be shade cover for those parking garages for the, the upper level, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
I see. Okay. Um, and how many spaces does the third level, how many parking spaces are on that third level? If it didn't exist, how many would they lose?
I have the overall parking spaces. I don't remember the exact number of parking spaces that are going. It all depends on striping and other things that comes into play as to the different levels. So the different levels may have different number of parking spaces because sometimes you can have compact parking, sometimes you can have other things. So I don't have the exact number.
Okay, but they feel it'd be detrimental to their development not to have that third level of parking?
Absolutely. We, with our conversation with them, this is a critical part to be able to have that class A office because part of covered parking is really critical to be able to have that quality of office in, you know, for such a place or use.
Okay, um, the square footage of the, the total square footage of all the buildings from two thousand and eight to two thousand and fourteen increased by, did you say ten thousand square feet or was that just one building?
Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor Duff, so in two thousand and seven, the total square footage was four, forty-four, forty-four thousand, three, no, forty-four, three thousand. And then in two thousand and fourteen, it was reduced to four hundred and thirty-four thousand. So it was reduced about ten thousand from two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen.
So they decreased their total square footage and increased their parking?
They decreased the total square footage from two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen. However, with a new proposal, which is going to add the new building, which is about fifty-five, just a minute. The new office building is approximately one fifty-three thousand square feet. So basically you are adding about one hundred and fifty, one fifty-three thousand square feet to the existing or the two thousand and fourteen square footage. So you, we are increasing the square footage from two thousand and fourteen. And that is also what has triggered the additional parking spaces. And I will add also to it that back in two thousand and seven, we did not have maximum number of parking spaces required. We had minimum parking spaces and they had, they had decent amount of parking. What they are doing is they are taking those, some of those parking spaces and putting them actually in a parking garage.
Okay, and I assume it's not cost-effective to just leave that parking structure at two stories and add on a third at the time that it's needed?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Duff, that's correct. And also with the addition of the new building, the new four-story building, that is also going to require additional parking spaces as well. So to be able to accommodate all the needs on the site, that's why they want to build a parking garage.
Yeah, I see. Okay. And, yeah, I understand about the mountain view. It's unfortunate, but it's not in our purview. That's something that we can protect, our property rights and at our property. And on mountain view, there's a lot of buildings, a lot of structures that can be between the, the home and beyond this. There's a lot of land in between that could be a possible obstruction. So even to protect it, if you could or should, is still not going to prevent further development in other areas. So, thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, for my colleagues, I just want you to know, I've sat in that parking lot, I've taken Nana over there. I've dragged him in there and said, "Nana, why do we have to build a three-and-a-half-story parking structure?" And we've, we've analyzed this and at the end of the day, the developer needs a parking structure to accommodate the tenants that will be coming to the proposed building. We tried to reduce the number of parking spaces based on the square footage of the building, but it's, it just can't happen. You know, I'd like to see a lower building myself and, but the developer, the tenants are driving that and they required amount of spaces for parking. The developer's already reduced the amount of parking spaces that has been asked, what, what's probably the top end of the parking space. Nana, is that correct? He's lowered it to down from, is the criteria is six spaces per, there's a ratio to that? And then he's reduced it down lower to that like four point eight? Can you help us understand that?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes, so two issues here. They've reduced the parking structure, the back of the parking structure. Their initial proposal was to have the three-story where they've reduced it from forty-four feet to twenty-six feet. So that basically took the back one level down to accommodate the concerns of the neighborhood. And also, we're looking at two parking requirements here. Back in two thousand and eight, where we only had minimum parking standards, we didn't have maximum. So they could have done a, built a lot of parking spaces. And then our current parking requirements is one piece per three hundred and seventy-five square feet. So they are combining our current requirement and then the old requirement and finding an average or the common way. And the way to do that is basically direct additional parking that in the past was not required to be contained in a building, which could have been spread on the side. They are accommodating that by building the parking garage to put those additional parking spaces inside the parking garage.
Thank you. You know, and I just want you to know, there are some, not restrictions, but there's an eight-foot diameter water line that's the Valvista Water Treatment Plant that runs into Phoenix along the southern edge between the canal and the building. So it makes it really not feasible to go in the ground and lower the height and then obviously the costs associated with that. We've had the discussion with the developer. But they do have entitlements to build the buildings that they have so desired. And they're not any higher than the existing buildings that are on the property. I have been to the neighborhood meetings and listened to them and their concerns and I, I see the site issue and, and I sympathetic with that. But I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing Monday's discussion on this and see where we can go from there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I think I've had a lot of the same discussions that Mr. Freeman had. I, I just want to compliment Mr. Freeman, he has been very engaged on this and I know he's been out to the site and he's on multiple occasions. And in my discussions with staff, I'm, I'm asking questions that he's already asked many times. And there's been a lot of effort put into this to, to make sure that, or to, to see from both staff and the developer is if there's, how can we make this as non-obtrusive to the, to the neighbors as possible? And so, but I want the neighborhood to know that, that, that there's no rush here. I mean, we are, we want to give them all the, every opportunity to be heard and we want to, we do have the, a hearing on Monday, but if we feel like there's still unresolved issues, I, I, like Mr. Freeman, would support continuing this until we make sure we've exhausted every opportunity to address the neighborhood's concerns to the fullest extent. Uh, Nana, just to make sure I, I understand this, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think in, if I, if, based on, on what I just heard in your presentation, it sounds like approved in the two thousand and fourteen administrative plant was a two-story parking structures that could be thirty-eight feet high. So that, that's the existing entitlements for the developer. Uh, and I think they've come to us initially asking for a four-story, fifty-five-foot-high parking structure, but that perhaps as a result of conversations with staff or, or going through the design review process and in an effort to compromise and make things maybe better for the neighborhood, the current proposal graduates from twenty-six feet up to forty-four feet. Did I understand that correctly?
Mayor, Council, that is correct. So what you're looking at right now, the two thousand and fourteen approved plans showed the possibility of building a parking structure, which is a two-story that could go up to thirty-eight feet. And then the new request for the parking structure is, here, is twenty-six feet at the back as you see here and then it goes to three stories, which is forty-four feet.
Okay, and I know we, we've commented on potential mountain view lots from, from the mesa there. Given the, the, the construction of the office buildings on, you know, off of Bass Pro Drive, that, that, I'm just wondering about the sightlines. From those, from those houses that have view lots, you know, on, on the mesa is, if, if, if the, if the garage is built as proposed, with, you know, graduate from twenty-six up to forty-four, would, would that, would, would the first, would, would those buildings obscure the, the long-term view? Or would that view be obscured by the office building on the other side of the parking garage? In, in other words, what, what's blocking their mountain views? Is it the parking garage or is it the building on the other side of the parking garage?
Mayor, Council, um, so before I answer that question, I think it's also critical to look at the two thousand and eight site plan, which had the two buildings on the side, which were two stories. With a new proposal and yes, Councilmember Freeman and I have gone out there. I've also gone out there a couple of times with staff and I've also gone out there with one of our planning and zoning board members. With a new addition, there is not much abstraction that is going to be extremely different from what they already entitled to build. However, Mayor, to answer your question also directly, if you look at the office building, which is fifty-five feet higher than the parking structure, you're still going to have a view or look at the, the office building, which is higher than the parking garage. So that is not, the parking structure is not the ultimate abstraction of view. It's going to be the office building.
Okay, thank you. Those are my initial questions based on, on the presentation, but I, I look forward to the, to the hearing on Monday as well. And then I suspect we'll, we'll all have additional questions then. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I just want to say that, you know, I, this whole area has really developed over the last few years and, and it's been qualified. has really developed over the last few years and, and it's been quality jobs that, that have been brought to this area. And, you know, I remember folks on council back in the day used to say, you know, the term was, if you want to protect your sightline, then buy the property. And, you know, so I agree with Councilmember Duff. You know, we have to consider property rights and, and the developer has the right to build on the property. If that obstructs the neighbors' views, I'm sorry. But the neighbors, if they want to preserve their view, then make an offer on the property and buy the property and then you can preserve your views of the mountains into perpetuity. But to stifle, to stymie quality development and bringing quality jobs into our community, just so that you can have a view of the mountains is, is beyond belief when you don't own the property. So I, I like the project. I think it's a really good project. I think it's needed in this area. It'll, it'll continue to help bring jobs into the area. And, and that's what I'm about, is bringing jobs to our community. That's what, you know, to me, jobs are what is the tide that lifts all ships. So I like the project and I'd like to see it move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I've seen the projects unfold and I've seen the developer and the projects he's developed over the years. So I'm comfortable with the projects as it stands. I think it's going to be an added amenity to that area. And certainly we want to continue to, to support these kind of things that attract jobs into, into all of Mesa, but specifically District One. So I think the, we, you know, I'm going to support the project, I think, moving forward. I think this is a good thing for the city of Mesa.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Council, additional comments? Another issue that I, I'm looking forward, Nana, do we, do we have the best and final rendering from the, the developer as to what the landscaping and, and screening would look like on, on the south side of that? Is that it? That, is this the final best and rendering of what the, the neighborhood could expect to see?
Mayor, Council, in terms of the landscaping, you're looking at the final. However, the last design review board meeting, they recommended the applicant to replace, you, you're looking at the screening material, but you really can't see here. They want it to be of a higher quality and want to see that type of screening material. So we're still waiting for the applicant to provide that. And that's the standard process where the final will go to the design review board. They will make those recommendations to the applicant and the applicant will provide those changes to staff. So as of today, we haven't received the final, final version showing the quality of screening materials. They had also recommended the applicant to add a little bit of building articulation to the parking structure as well. And we are here to see the final one. But there is a condition of approval to this case that require the applicant to comply with the design review process. So that is the typical process that we go through for such rezoning cases.
Okay, so just so we're clear on, on the process here, if, if the council goes forward with approving the zoning, the design review process is still not complete and, and items like following up on the screening and the landscaping would still be conditions that the landlord, that the developer would have to comply with before they could proceed?
Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other questions on this item? All right, well, we'll look, look forward to the hearing on, this is off of the consent. This will be on our agenda for Monday. Moving forward on, on our agenda, so Mr. Brady, items 2A and 2B, we've already covered because those were the staff presentations on the Legacy Sports Park in the cemetery. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That being the case, next item on our agenda for this meeting, council's item 3A. That's to acknowledge receipt of minutes of the Economic Development Advisory Board held on the 2nd of February. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Heredia.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Duff.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you, I vote aye as well, so that passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item four, that's current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Let's begin with Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mary. Sorry, I kept on calling you Mary. Sorry about that. Sunday through Tuesday, I attended the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference. Due to the ongoing pandemic, this year's event was held virtually. While attending the conference, I was able to have a great discussion with Transportation Secretary Buttigieg about updates and progress we're making concerning transportation infrastructure here in the city of Mesa. But I do really need to thank Mr. Brady, Scott Butler, Randy Polikar, and MAG executive director Eric Anderson for providing me with excellent information to share, to share with the Secretary of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg. I was also able to attend a well-represented Hilo meeting. Of course, I'm, I'm chair of that, of that committee, where we heard Washington updates from U.S. Representative Nanette Baragan and then heard a presentation from Latino leaders, Latino leaders from around the country on how we can support small businesses and COVID-19 recovery. There was a great meeting of constituency groups that met during the conference. There was representation and leadership from Latino constituency groups, African-American groups, Women Leadership Organization, WIMMAGE, and LGBTQ constituency groups. And so I was fortunate to attend many of those meetings as well. There was this great discussion among all groups, including exciting exploration and creating a Native American constituency group, which is really exciting for, for the future and, and part of an NLC organization. And I look forward to working with my national partners and making this a reality. And of course, last Thursday, along with Vice Mayor Duff, we participated in We Run Mesa event at Eagles Community Center. It was awesome to see a good group of kids who enjoyed the event with Mesa PD, including Chief Cuss. Thank you, Nicole Leba, for making this possible. It's always a fun event to, to watch the kids run and, and, and be really physical during that time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Council, who'd like to go next? Let's go with Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have the opportunity to connect to some NLC meetings and found them very informative. We also went, Mayor, yourself, Vice Mayor, myself, went to the Mesa Plays down at the Mesa Historical Museum. And that's a new ball game exhibit. So we invite all and any to visit the Mesa Historical Museum. They have a really, really neat display down there. So we're honored to be there and help open up that exhibit. So kudos to the Mesa Historical Museum. They're just doing some really great and wonderful things there as long, as long as they're, they have other exhibits there, so public is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Vice Mayor Duff.
Yes, um, backing up to last Tuesday, I attended a lunch mob with the Mesa Chamber of Commerce sponsored by Palmeroy's. And we talked about downtown and all the new additions. And in addition, this last Monday, Mayor and I attended a ribbon cutting for the 70th anniversary of Palmeroy's. And I'm sure he'd like to make some comments about their significant history for our city. But I'm going to say especially for our downtown, businesses like that that have been in, our legacy businesses do bring such character and history. And what makes downtown special is that history. And I appreciate all the years of everything they've gone through, everything that they've seen in their business, being able to persevere and be here and still in the same family. So thank you to Michelle and everybody at Palmeroy's for the business that they continue to do here. I also attended the National League of Cities Conference. I'm on the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Council and also the Youth Education and Families Committee. And I attended also some workshops on climate change. On Monday, I was a panelist in a summit put on by the Associated Students of Mesa Community College for a Women's Empowerment Summit on International Women's Day. And also on the panel was Fire Chief Mary Camelli, as well as some other members from the Mesa community. It was inspiring and powerful and I thank them for allowing me to share in that. And that's about it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, other comments? I will, will accept Vice Mayor Duff's invitation to comment on Palmeroy's Men's Store. I was tickled to be with, with the Vice Mayor to cut a ribbon and to, to celebrate 70 years of that business. I know Mr. Freeman is, is well acquainted with that family as well. I had the, the real honor and privilege of serving on this city council with, with Mayor Wayne Palmeroy when he came back as a council member. And he was one of my favorite people, all-time people. So it's, it's fun to see family-owned businesses that are legacy institutions in, in our community like, like, and on our Main Street. And so congratulations to Michelle, congratulations to the Palmeroy family for being, not just having a business, but having such a, a great business for, for 70 years. My, my hope is that a lot of the businesses that are now starting, starting up on, on Main Street will be family-owned and, and celebrated businesses for decades to come like Palmeroy's. So congratulations to them and then thank you to everyone who's helped to help celebrate that. Also, Mr. Luna's comments about meeting with Secretary Buttigieg reminded me that, that last week I had an opportunity with a small group of mayors to meet virtually with Homeland, Homeland Security Secretary Mayorkas. And I had the opportunity to ask him questions regarding concerns that we have locally for the, the surge of asylum seekers that we're seeing at, at our southern border and, and Border Patrol and ICE's need to, to, to seek the assistance of nonprofits and faith-based organizations in our community to assist with, with, with that process. They're, they're overwhelmed as far as their capacity for, for housing those individuals. And this is, you know, the same scenario that we experienced about a year and a half to two years ago when we saw the, the last surge at, at the borders. So I was pushing for additional funding for the, the great organizations that we have in our community that are, that are being asked by the federal government to assist them in, in addressing the surge and was assured that, that that's at the top of the federal government's priorities and, and they understand the pressures that, that border states and cities like Mesa are experiencing. Thank you. If there's any, anything else you'd like to share with us, Council? Yes, Mr. Heredia.
I just wanted to say, you know, thanks for the, the House, Congress passing the American Rescue Plan this week. I think it has much-needed continual aid for local municipalities throughout the country, including Mesa, in, in recovering from this pandemic. And hopefully we can keep on assisting our small businesses or residents as, as it moves forward and ensure that we bounce back even stronger from this pandemic in the next couple of months, next year. And so, I appreciate that. I was, I was on a press call with Phoenix Mayor and Tucson Mayor earlier last.
Thank you, I think we are, you're frozen. So if you unfreeze, well, we'll look forward to hearing the rest of that comment. In, in the meantime, Mr. Brady, Mr. Heredia makes a, a great point noting that the, you know, with the latest round of COVID relief funding and, and including state and local government, we do have, we have received word that we're going to receive substantial funding. I, I'd like to ask that, I know staff is working right now on analyzing what the impacts of that will be to our city. But if we could put on an agenda, maybe an update at our, one of the next council meetings we have as to what staff's thoughts are right now in terms of the, the amount and, and how we're going to go about going through the, the process as we did. I thought so well last year at, at the beginning of this, of, of doing a needs assessment to determine how those funds ought to be allocated.
Yes, Mayor, we can do that. And I think we'll also are awaiting more guidance from Treasury on the guidance for how the monies will be spent. But we'll, as soon as we have those, we'll be glad to bring a proposal, some ideas to council for those funding sources. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we may have lost Mr. Heredia, so we'll look forward to hearing the rest of his comments when he, when he rejoins. Vice Mayor Duff.
Before we adjourn, we have on our agenda this morning, the, well, the Community and Cultural Development Committee meeting is coming up. And so I just wanted to voice a preference after this. We had like a five-minute break and get back into it. So I know for me, it'll help me try to somewhat keep on schedule with some other meetings and not to have a, a long delay, so I was just asking that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Remind us, who, who are, you and Mr. Luna and who's the third member of that committee?
Councilman Heredia, if we can get him back.
All right. Council, anything else for us before we conclude this meeting? All right, is there a motion to amend this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please unmute your microphones. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.